Are we still waiting for Ryan, or are we good to go?
Before we broke, you need a motion to amend the agenda, but just start that over, please.
You want to just start over, start from the beginning?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda?
Mayor, I would like to add a closed session for personnel discussion. I would like to make a motion to add a closed session for personnel.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor. Now, the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
To approve the agenda as amended.
Second, all in favor, motion passes, thank you. New business. I think we're going to give the planning board, yeah, David?
I'd like to make a motion to recuse George Rowe from PD 2025-02 for conflict of interest.
There's a motion, is there a second? All in.
If you would, just in discussion, just let the public know what the conflict is. And Mr. Rowe, you can speak too.
He has a financial gain interest.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor. Motion passes, thank you. All right. The process for this public hearing, staff will provide general overview of the request, applicants will be provided details of the request, board of commissioners will ask questions for clarification, planning board will ask questions for clarifications, the mayor will open a joint public hearing, the public will make comments, and the mayor will close. Now, the comments can only be on the issues, the items that we are discussing. Don't need to sign up, just raise your hand, I'll recognize you and come over to the podium when we get to that part. Alrighty. Rules, the public hearing, public hearing does opportunity for the public to express thoughts, ideas, concerns, and opinions regarding the proposed requests to the board of commissioners and planning board, the board of commissioners, planning board, staff, and applicant will not engage in dialogue at this time. If the public has questions pertaining to the development, please contact staff, county staff, or the applicant following the public hearing. Mixed use plan development zoning 2025-02, staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, and Planning Board members. Today, we will be discussing the Zebulon mixed-use plan development rezoning 2025-02. So, these are the standards that both the board commissioners and planning board must remember when recommending their decision with regards to this project. Number one, does it meet the health, safety, and welfare of all residents and visitors in the town of Zebulon? Number two, is this project appropriate for the location where it is going? Number three, is this project reasonable within the public's interests? And number four, any other relevant factors that the boards may deem as important with regards to this project? Now, it's also important to consider that the boards must also remember that all plan development rezoning projects, all conditions and regulations with regards to them must be better than the strict interpretation of the town's unified development ordinance standards per UDO Section 3.5.5. So, a little bit about this property, the applicant is Ms. Beth Bailey with McKimmon Creed. The property owners are Marfa and Lonnie Stansel. The property addresses are Zero, 1928, and 1938 Zebulon Road. This project site consists of 14.546 acres. It is currently zoned as heavy commercial HC and suburban residential R2. And the proposed zoning is a planned development or PD zoning district. Notification, public hearing signs were posted on all frontages of this site, mailed notices were sent out to property owners within 750 feet of the site, a paper of general circulation was sent out two times in Wake Weekly, and this project was also posted on the Town of Zebulon's website. Currently, this property is zoned as heavy commercial, which is shown in the dark red in the front of this property along Zebulon Road, and in the light yellow in the rear of the property, it is zoned as suburban residential. The future land use map has this site as general commercial, which is highlighted in the light red in the front of this property along Zebulon Road, and the rear of this property, it is also zoned as suburban residential. The timeline of activity, this project was first submitted to town staff on December 3, 2024. The comment letters were sent back to the applicant on January 6, 2025. The technical review committee meeting was held on January 8, 2025. The second review was submitted to town staff on February 13, 2025. The second comment letter was sent back to the applicant on March 5 of 2025, and the joint public hearing packet submitted was submitted to town staff on March 18 of 2025. Concept plan of what this site is going to look like, this is just a general picture of what is proposed in front of you all today, and now I'll get into a little more detail about the nitty-gritty little elements of this project. So, along the front of this property, they are proposing to have three out parcels, and these are most likely going to be commercial uses in the front of the property along Zebulon Road. And behind the front of this property, there are going to be two mixed-use buildings labeled here as MU1 or MU2, or mixed-use building one, mixed-use building two, and the developers proposing the first floor of these buildings to have retail or commercial uses, and then the floors above them will have apartment units. And between these two buildings, there will be a total of 60 rental units, 30 on mixed-use building one, and then the other 30 on mixed-use building two, above the retail uses on the first floor. Apartments, so in the rear of this property, there are going to be four standalone apartment buildings, which means that these buildings are only going to have apartments, so there's no retail on the first floor, every single floor is going to have apartment rental units, and these, all four of these buildings are going to have a total of 240 rental units, with a total of 300 total rental units within this entire project site, which will significantly contribute to Zebulon's rental market. Considerations, these are certain elements and conditions that town staff will go over that we deem as important to provide both boards today in this meeting, and if you have any questions with these considerations or considerations we don't go over in this PowerPoint slide, feel free to ask that later on after our presentations to town staff, as well as the applicant, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have. The first thing we're going to discuss is permitted uses. As you can see here, obviously, the first PowerPoint, the first bullet point, excuse me, says multifamily dwelling, which is apartment units, upper-story residential, which I went over briefly about with the mixed-use buildings, as well as other commercial uses such as restaurant, retail sales, coffee shop, office spaces, et cetera, and it's important to note that, obviously, this doesn't cover all of the permitted uses, but all the permitted uses are found in the applicant's planning development narrative, which was handed out in your packet a couple of days ago. Another important element I would like to discuss is the pedestrian path that is going to be located on the northern portion of this site, and this path will start on Long Zebulon Road, it will cut over through the northern portion of this property, and it will connect to the Beaver Creek Dam Trail, which is important because not only would this allow for walkability throughout residents and visitors of the site, but it would also allow for people who live in Weaver's Pond and Terrence Meadows neighborhoods to be able to walk over to this site as well. Some amenities that we'll discuss today, the picture on the left shows the outdoor event venue space, and then the picture on the right shows a outdoor grilling and dining area, a playground, and a pool, all of these amenities are for the residents of these apartments to enjoy it. Some road connections, the picture on the left shows a connection stub to the adjacent property to the north of the site, and then the picture on the right shows a connection stub to the property adjacent to the south of the site, and this would allow for future site connectivity for future developments later in the future. Now, we're going to discuss some perimeter, the perimeter buffers of the Zebulon mixed-use plan development rezoning project. The image on the left shows a 10-foot buffer, and to provide a little more context, that is going to be a proposed 10-foot Type A buffer, which will abide by all of the Type A perimeter buffer standards in the town's unified development ordinance, and then the rest of the perimeter buffers are proposed to be a 20-foot Type B perimeter buffer, which will also abide by the Type B perimeter buffer standards in the town's unified development ordinance. The applicant is also proposing a 15-foot Type C modified streetscape buffer along their frontage on Zebulon Road, and that will also abide by the streetscape buffer standards in the town's unified development ordinance. Road improvements, the applicant is proposing the, to help the town with the cost and construction of the four-lane median divided widening, which is on the Town of Zebulon Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and along Zebulon Road is a, once again, four-lane median divided widening, and the applicant may seek a fee in lieu to help the town pay and construct that road widening, and they also are providing sidewalks along the frontage of the site, and so the applicant will help town staff with their half of the median lane, additional road lane, including curb, gutter, a five-foot planting strip, and sidewalk. The architecture of the site, before I provide a little more detail, it's important to note that these images are not exactly what the architecture will look like on the site if this project were to move forward, but this is just generally a rough idea of what the architecture might look like, you know, per the decisions, and so the image on the left shows the architecture of what the standalone apartment buildings might look like, and then the rest of the image kind of shows a rough sketch of what the mixed-use buildings might look like, and as you see here, the three images shows the retail or commercial uses on the first floor, and then apartment units on the floors above it, which is what the site is proposing. Now, with all plan development rezonings, if a project wants to connect to the public water system, they have to, the developer must comply with the utility allocation policy requirement, and so for this project, the developer received 40 base points for a mixed-use development greenfield, and then they also allocated the additional points below it to complete the requirement of 60 points, which is the amount that is required in order to comply with the town's utility allocation policy requirement. And once again, the standards that both boards must remember when making a decision with regards to this plan development rezoning, number one is this project applicable to the health, safety, and welfare of all residents and visitors in the town of Zebulon, number two is this project appropriate for the location of where it is trying to be located on, number three is this project reasonable within the public's interests, and number four, any other relevant factors that the boards deem as important when making their decision, and again, all elements and conditions of all plan development projects, including this one, must be better than the strict interpretation of the unified development ordinance standards per UDO Section 3.5.5. Standing public comment after the applicant's presentation and referring the matter to the planning board for recommendation.
Thank you so much.
You have the applicant's presentation. You have an opportunity to come up and ask. After they do their presentation, then I will give the public an opportunity to come up and ask questions.
Good evening. My name is James Todd, I'm the attorney for the applicant Spectrum Investment Solutions, LLC. Thank you, Board of Commissioners and Planning Board, for your time this evening, and thank you to Mr. Medina for his very good overview of the project. Before we get into location and site plan, a big purpose of our presence here this evening is to answer questions that both the board and the commissioners have, so we have several folks in the room that have worked on different aspects of this project. Beth Johnson is the engineer with McKimmon Creed, who can answer specifics about the site plan. Robert Terry is here, a part for the developer, to answer kind of general questions about the background of it, but also the economic impact that we anticipate from this project. Caroline Cheves is a traffic engineer, will be able to answer road improvement and traffic questions. Bob Nagel is the architect that worked on the site, or will work on the site, and then, as I said, I'm James Todd, I'm the attorney. So, I think we have a good team in the room tonight to answer your questions, please. We have a short presentation, but don't hesitate to stop us, we're really here to try to answer questions that you may have. I'll try to get closer to the mic, I'm sorry, it's a... So, the site is? Further along Highway 96, across the highway, it is currently zoned a combination of HC and R2, heavy commercial and suburban residential, about 14 and a half acres, posing a rezoning to planned district, to accommodate a combination of multifamily, standalone, commercial out parcels, and mixed-use residential over commercial on the first floor. As Mr. Medina showed, this is the overall master plan for the site, starting along Highway 96 and moving towards the rear of the site, the first three buildings are commercial out parcels. These are standalone, probably one-story, commercial buildings. As you move further in, the next two buildings are those mixed-use, living over retail proposed uses, and then towards the rear of the site are the four multifamily apartment buildings. At the very rear of the site is a stormwater pond, and then there's the amenities to the north, there's also an amenity outdoor van area in between the two mixed-use buildings at the center of the site. When we originally had our neighborhood meeting for this project back in September of '24, the layout of these buildings was different, there was much more, it was much heavier along the perimeter of the site, but after taking feedback from some of the neighbors and reevaluating the site plan, we've made a real effort to put the denser uses towards the center of the site, to create more distance from the single-family residential that exists to the south, and then further up off the screen to the north, and then also to create that transition from commercial only towards the front where the site is zoned HC, and also shown on the future land use plan as general commercial, towards kind of a transition through that mixed use to multifamily towards the rear of the site. There will be interconnectivity through sidewalks, there's the eight-foot multimodal path that is a proposed greenway connection to the Beaver Dam Creek Greenway to the north, and so that's really, it's a good opportunity for the folks that would live at this project, you know, to go on the greenway and access other areas, but also for existing residents to come onto this project and take advantage of the retail uses and the commercial towards the front of the site. There's been a downscaling, I guess, of the total number of units, I think in an earlier version of this plan, we were proposing 300 residential units, but it's actually going to be a maximum of 250, that's including the mixed use as well as the four standalone. These buildings are proposed, the multifamily and the mixed use are proposed at a max height of four stories, the standalone out parcels to the front would probably be one story. And that results, like I said, in 250 total residential units, as well as a maximum of 25,000 square feet of commercial space. In addition to the multifamily, the mixed use, and the commercial buildings that are proposed for the site, there's a number of road improvements that come along with this. As I said, Caroline Cheves is our traffic engineer, if you have specific questions about what the road widening or the turn lanes look like, she'll be better positioned to answer them than I am, but we are, the developer is proposing to improve the entire frontage of Highway 96 along the project's boundary. So, we think that this is a good opportunity for the town, but also obviously for the developer, to bring a project that brings a blend of commercial and residential uses, creates housing variety for the town, creates additional density in a place where it doesn't have an outsized impact on the surrounding properties, and brings the mixed use and commercial along Highway 96, where it's a real benefit. Taking a lot of care with this site design to make sure that it doesn't create negative impacts for the folks around us, some of that, like I said, was the massing of the buildings towards the center of the site, but also the 20-foot Type B buffer that's being proposed around the perimeter of the site, and the distances that the buildings are set back from those boundaries. It's going to be a good opportunity to create a new place for folks to live, work, and shop, as well as benefit the community with the additional commercial and housing opportunities that are being brought in. As Mr. Medina said, these are not renderings of the exact housing and multifamily or multi-mixed-use product that's being proposed for the site, but they are representative, try to give the idea of what this may look like. We are proposing some specific design and architectural conditions as part of the zoning conditions that you may have seen in your staff packet, if you haven't had a chance to look at those, I think they start on page 18 of your packet, and so there are, there's going to be specific zoning conditions around materials used and what these buildings will look like, and these are some representations of what we think that that may end up being.
Could you please just give us an overview of what those are, just so the public has an understanding?
Absolutely. So, like I said, proposing a number of conditions, I think there are 12 zoning conditions in total, that includes the permitted uses. So, the design requirements for the improvements, for the mixed use and retail buildings, two or more material types will be used, an aesthetic and modern color scheme will be used, stone and masonry accents will be provided on a minimum of 25% of all front building facades, and stone and masonry accents will be a minimum of a two-foot skirt under the front elevation. For the multifamily buildings, obviously, we'll have to comply with the UDO multifamily residential design standards, to the extent possible based on parcel size, shape, and proposed location, but all front building facades will be fiber cement siding, side and rear elevations may be vinyl siding or fiber cement siding with colors to match front elevations, and architectural style shingles will be used. As Mr. Medina noted, there are review standards for the planning board and the board of commissioners to consider in looking at this application, I'd like to run through those quickly, as I said, please, please don't hesitate to ask any questions as they arise. The first is whether rezoning advances public health, safety, and welfare. We think this creates a real benefit to the housing variety and quantity in the town of Zebulon, this offers 250 residential units at different price points and of an apartment type that is designed to accommodate the growth that all of Eastern Wake County is facing. We're also creating appropriate traffic improvements to mitigate traffic impact and adding retail and commercial uses as an economic benefit. Second review standard is the use appropriate for proposed location and consistent with purposes and policies the town's adopted guidance. As you saw on your future land use plan, commercial is contemplated towards the front of the site along Highway 96, and then residential to the back. In some ways, we're kind of splitting the difference between maybe a heavier commercial use towards the front and a lower-density residential use towards the back, spanning the entire site with a planned development district that sort of blends the two and balances them out, but we have maintained that original intent with the commercial uses towards the front of the site, transitioning through mixed use to residential only towards the rear. The third is that this is a reasonable, it's reasonable and in the public interest, we think this creates jobs and homes, we think it's going to have positive economic impact. Mr. Terry is here, he's going to give you more detail in a minute about the expected economic impact of this project, but we think this is going to be good for the town. The fourth is that the master plan is consistent with the UDO. I'll defer to planning staff on whether it is, but we checked the boxes, we've gone through a couple of review cycles, this is consistent with the town's UDO requirements. We are not, there is an option under this process to provide a plan that is detailed to the point where it complies with the site plan requirements, and then to request exemption from the site plan review process, we're not doing that, this is a master plan, it's less detailed than the ultimate construction drawings and site plan approval will be, and so the town staff will have another opportunity with a more detailed site plan to really work on the, kind of the nitty-gritty of the design. And then lastly, is this project compatible with the surrounding areas? And we think that it is, there's been a lot of attention given to the initial design of the project, but also the way that that design has evolved in response to town planning comments and feedback from the neighbors, the neighborhood meeting, a lot of effort to shift heavier uses away from those single-family boundary lines, and to transition it, like I said, from commercial at the front to less intense residential uses towards the rear of the site, so that this is a good place for, you know, the neighbors that are already there today, but also the folks that are going to live on this property, we want this to be positive for them as well. We mentioned the buffers that are around the perimeter of the site, there'll be two entry points on to Zebulon Road at the north and south of the site, those are full access turn-in, turn-out access points, turn lanes are being added as part of the traffic improvements to help mitigate the additional traffic created by the project. So, in conclusion, we think that this is, like I said, a good project that adds additional housing variety and commercial retail uses to an area that it will benefit from, it will benefit the town. I would ask, if there are no immediate questions for me, for Robert to come up and speak a little bit about the economic impact that we anticipate from this project, trying to get to his, or his side. As I said, thank you for the opportunity, and we have the whole team here to answer questions you may have, thanks.
Excuse me. Hey, folks, my name is Robert Terry from Insight Residential Realty, and we represent seller in this, in this transaction, and we've assisted the development team, the investor group with this, with this particular development. What we decided to do here was do an overall economic impact study because of the, because of the type of the project that is, being that mixed use with retail, housing, that type of stuff, and we thought that that was important, that people get a look at what this, what this project's going to be. We think we came up with a pretty good name, we're going to call it... We're going to call it Gateway Zebulon, and because of its location here in the northern part of North Arendal, it's a heavily trafficked part of the road system around here. For anyone that might not be familiar with it, people have been driving up there, I guess, for a number of years. And this is going to be, if you're, if you're a new person driving into town, that's going to be the first, one of the first things that you're going to come across is going to be this particular location. The location currently is a, is a farm, you know, the remnants of a, excuse me, a farm and a older commercial structure. So this will be a noticeable change from its current use. A couple of the, a couple of the interesting items here are as follows. As you can see, the, this mixed, the investment that's going to be required here is close to $70 million. It's going, going to have an annual economic impact of just under $20 million. It's residential, there's a commercial component. I've lived here in town for 25 years, April 1st, 20, 24 years, excuse me, on April 1st. And the entire time that I've lived here, a lot of people have, people have generally talked about, you know, the town growing and wanting more opportunities to shop and to dine and this type of thing. And we think that we've, we've found a way to help people improve the quality of life here in Zebulon. There's some, underneath there is the economic multipliers from the resident spending and the job creation. Economic impact benefits to Zebulon. Improved NC Highway 96 with median sidewalks and bike paths. People have discussed this previously, so I won't talk about that too much. The, the long-term growth when it's a completed project and it's full, there's a significant tax revenue base for the town. We're looking at a number somewhere around $700,000 a year in tax revenue. Currently, I'm not sure what the, what the current owner's tax rate is, but it's not that. And whatever it is, it's probably too much. But what, we're going to see significant, long-term growth in the tax revenue. The, the business, the economic impact on the business, as we said earlier, is going to be around $20 million for the different businesses. The construction costs, we've got residential about $50 million, 250 units, 200 unit, commercial about $11 million. The, some other numbers there, total construction cost there of $60,750,000. So this is a significant investment from the buyers. Road improvement, utilities, the road improvement is a big thing there, it's two and a half million there, the utilities, water sewer, 1.2, stormwater management, a million. Landscaping and open spaces, $1.8 million. Total infrastructure cost, six and a half million. Permitting fees, $40,000. Traffic and impact fees, $837,500. That's significant. That's a big number. The town needs to improve the road systems. I think we all, we all would agree on that. So that, that type of money's going to come in handy. Excuse me. Parks and recreation fees, $250,000. Building permits, right there at $400,000. Once again, that's a big number. Parking fees of $5 million on a 14-acre site, that's, that's significant. We go down here, this is the total property tax revenue, 700,000. We touched on that a little, a little earlier. Jobs, the, the direct jobs in the construction phase of it will be somewhere between 225 and 275 jobs. We, we took the most conservative number that we could figure. The total, the total payroll of those jobs will be $11,250,000. The investor group is quite happy to, when they bid out these jobs, are hopeful that local, local business will want to get a little piece of this and, and jump on it and give us some, give us some quotes. So we're, we're hoping that that really works out in, in that particular manner. On the operational phase, we took, we got a fairly conservative number once again of about 80 jobs. We think the number's going to be a little bit higher. These jobs would be obviously retail, maintenance, this type of thing. Total payroll, we, we took the average payroll number here in town, and that's about $3.2 million a year in. Can we go on here? So that's the, I think that's, that's it. As you can see, there's a substantial benefit for the, for the town. More importantly, I think there's substantial benefit for the current owners of the property. They're at a particular stage in life where they'd like to sell their land and move on, and I think that we should try to find a way to help them achieve that goal. The, we've got a ready, willing, and able seller, ready, willing, and able buyers. We should see if we can find a way to figure this out. It's a, going to be an exciting, an exciting project for the town, given what it is. It's the first, first project of its type in the town, and the, the investor group that's going to build this particular project, it's going to be high-quality. They're good people, they're family-oriented people, and they will be great partners for the owners and for the town. So there's a lot to look forward to, and I would, I would hope that everybody would be able to support this project. Answering questions after anybody else here wants to jump in?
So we, we don't have any more planned presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Got traffic, site, architecture, whatever we can do to help.
Questions, comments from the board of commissioners? Commissioner Baxter?
Yeah, so looking at the residential component, talk to me a little bit about the ADA accessibility within the apartments, because it looks like maybe it will just be ground floor?
For ADA apartments?
Yeah.
I'm going to defer, would you be the right ADA person? It's Bob. We have the architect here.
Awesome.
He'll give a better answer than I will.
So the apartment buildings are subject to North Carolina Building Code, Accessibility Code, and also the Fair Housing Act. So the ground floor units will have the accessible, what we call type A units. Those are full, adaptable to handicap dwelling, where the type B, which are also on the ground floor of the apartments, those are the remaining ones that are not necessarily full, fully accessible, but they have a degree of accessibility to them that's greater than a normal standard unit. And so that's throughout all of the first floor. Now, any buildings with elevators, all the units in that building are subject to accessibility. So in the, in the picture on the screen right now, building A and B have elevators. So every unit in there will have to have some level of accessibility, where C and D, only the ground floor units have to be accessible, because they're three-story.
Awesome.
And then for the mixed-use component, those buildings will also have elevators. So all the residential units in those buildings will be subject to accessibility as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Baxter?
Yeah, when looking at the 20-foot buffer surrounding the property, I would like to make a request that the buffer be planted with pollinator-friendly plants wherever possible. Is that something that the investor and developer are willing to commit to?
It is.
Okay. And in addition, is there a way to work with staff in consideration of perhaps putting an aerator in the stormwater pond to cut down on potential insect growth, particularly mosquitoes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then my final question is, is there a way for the developer to work with staff so that we might see approximately 13 of those units priced to be workforce housing?
Yeah, so obviously housing affordability is, is an issue that deeply affects all municipalities right now. Everywhere you go, this is a key issue, something the developer's aware of. And so kind of in acknowledgement of that challenge, the developer is willing to commit to setting aside 5% of the residential units in this project at the Raleigh Metro fair market rent number. Fair market rent is a number published by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It changes by zip code, but it is tied to 40% of gross rents for that area. And so we would, we would tie it to the Raleigh Metro, which encompasses all of Wake County, and then to the specifics of code, and we're happy to make that commitment.
That's awesome. But may I also ask in addition that if the 5% is a partial build that you round up, so that you're not saying, oh, well, we're going to round down and do one less house?
A certain.
One, one more.
Right, so 250 units, 5% would be like 12 and a half, so that would push us up to...
That's why I was asking for 13?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The developer will commit to 13.
All right, awesome. Thank you so very much. I'm excited about this project. I think it's exactly what we need, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this all plays out.
One second, I've got one question, ma'am. What did I say? You gave the numbers based off of Raleigh. What would that potential, like the potential average rent be for those units? If you could break that down for me, please?
Sure.
The, the rent would be, and this is just real broad strokes here, the, the rent would be on the smaller units here, we did, we did a study and we kind of see, see this number at around $1,800 to about a $2,200 a month window for larger units. The, the, the number from Raleigh would be about $200 or so under that. We also will have, we also see that this would be a good, a good, a good location for the town with regard to incoming teachers, because we've got the new schools and that coming here to the town. We kind of think that we'll, we'll attract a lot of people there. We see the, the residents of the property being, being younger, a lot of like first-time homebuyer type thing who, you know, are not ready to buy a, a home yet. And in the, on the lower levels, on the, on the buildings with the main levels, we might see some older people as well. We think, we think it's going to be a younger, younger type residence here at this particular project.
Where, oh, does it say 18 to 22 is what I written down?
Minus 200.
It could be, you know, that's, you know, it could be a little more than that, it could be a little less, but.
Sorry. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. With this development being a workforce driver and an economic driver for our community, would there be a possibility to, as you mentioned, new teachers coming in, to have some type of incentives for not only teachers, but also for fire and police within our community?
Point out, I am not 100% sure what restrictions there might be on our ability to determine who is benefited in the rental process. I know it's important to the developer to make this a workforce-friendly development and a priority and something we will prioritize throughout the process. But I'll be candid, I think we've got to be careful with Fair Housing Act and some other restrictions here to make sure that we don't, we don't accidentally, you know, trip over, you know, trip on a rake here. So generally, yes, and that, and that is the approach that we want to take within the bounds of the law and what we're allowed to do.
Forward to hearing more about that. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments from the board of commissioners? Hearing none. Now we were here from the planning board. Any questions or comments from the planning board?
I just have a comment and also, I guess, a question. First of all, I like the fact that you have one-bedroom apartments. That is something we definitely need here in Zebulon. And then the question, and this is more on the amenities side of it, but when you're having your washer and dryer units, are you focusing on putting them per unit or somewhere in like a washer, laundry develop area?
I believe that they're going to be washer and dryer inside the units. Okay. Because on the plan, there isn't any, any side, yes, we're probably going to be inside the units.
Yeah.
We'll tee that up for you with the, with the architect on. Yeah, no problem.
So I just had a quick question. Under the standards, a planned development has to be better than the strict interpretation of the UDO. So just real quick bullet point, is it, what exactly are you proposing that's better than our current UDO? Is it just the architectural enhancements to the buildings, or is there more to that?
I think the architectural enhancements are, are part of it. The commitment to the amenities on the site, the additional connectivity that's being provided inside the site, and then the mix of uses that's possible under planned development that wouldn't be necessarily under the different types of general zoning districts. The ability to, to put together kind of a comprehensive project like this that, you know, has commercial and mixed use and residential in the way that it's been done, I think is an enhancement to the general UDO, especially the base zoning that's there today.
I would like to say that I think that this is a great project for Zebulon, and I have a question. I have a question for the parking for the residents. Do you have designated parking just for residents?
We do.
Couple of questions. How big is the venue space planned to be?
That's the space between the two mixed-use buildings.
Yes, sir.
So, there's 73 feet, it looks like, in between the sidewalks there. You know, the goal of the master plan is to kind of generally depict the mix of uses and the locations. This is going to go through refinement as part of the site plan process. So, final design details on, you know, the shade structure that might be there, the benches and the, you know, the exact amount of paving and bushes and stuff, isn't final at this rezoning stage. But generally speaking, you have a 70-ish feet in between there, and then the distance between the buildings. Can't tell exactly, maybe 30, 40 feet, just looking at it. Like I said, it's kind of subject to final design and part of the site plan.
Second question, so I understand that the mixed-use buildings could be a maximum of four stories. What about the residential buildings?
The condition we're proposing is for a max height across the site of four stories. I think the apartment buildings are intended to be three stories tall, and then the four-story height max would be those two mixed use. So, you'd have ground floor, residential, commercial. Bob, am I stepping wrong here?
No, I think you got it right. It's the ground buildings are four stories, and then the urbanists toward the back are a combination of four stories and three stories.
So, I'm sorry, four stories or three stories on the apartments? Is there any consideration, or what kind of consideration, I guess, is going to be given to harmonizing the design of the mixed-use architecture with the residential architecture?
Yeah, it's a good question, and one I'd like Bob to answer.
I apologize, I had a little trouble hearing you. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What consideration is going to be given to harmonizing the architectural elements of the mixed-use buildings with the residential buildings? I know the renderings you have here are not what we're going to see at the end product, but they're, the residential ones are very different than the mixed use. So, I was just curious, is there going to be some consistency? You know, are they all, are all the mixed use going to be very modern-looking, and the residential be very traditional, or is it going to all be sort of harmonized, so it's all of a similar?
Sure, good question. The intent right now is for the mixed-use buildings and the apartment buildings to talk to one another, and they would do that through scale and through materials and colors. I don't think we have anything planned where they are just totally in contrast from one another. So, definitely harmonize.
And the last and probably biggest question, can you speak more fully on what exactly the road improvements are going to be and the traffic situation? Do you anticipate most of the trips to the commercial space to be from within the community or from outside?
Hi, can you hear me okay? My name is Caroline Chiefs. I'm with DRMP. I'm a professional traffic engineer, and we prepare the traffic impact analysis. And to answer your question, we take that into account with the trip generation. We include what's called internal capture. An internal capture is, you know, a capture of trips between residential office and retail space. If they're all together, there'll be some people who work where they live, or eat where they work, or, you know, vice versa. And so, that's all taken into account in the trip generation, and then that is distributed to the roadway network. Do you have any more specific questions?
What, Highway 96, Zebulon Road, is going to be a four-lane divided highway ultimately?
It is slated to be that in the future. We can only control our frontage, so what we are doing is widening along our frontage to that half of the ultimate section. It's shown here, showing what those, that will look like in the future with the through lanes. It's very likely that those through lanes will just be striped as right turn lanes into our site, because the through lanes won't be carried through past our site frontage, if that makes sense.
So, will people, people coming from, I guess, from the north side, like from the Wake Forest side down south onto 96, there's going to be a left turn lane for them to turn into?
Yes, yes, there will be a left turn lane. Is this a pointer to? Left turn lane on that southern access, and the northern access will just be right and right out.
Oh, can you, the last one was just, the developer may seek a fee in lieu for one-half of the 12-foot wide median. Can you just clarify what a fee in lieu would be?
So, we're obviously not in the full design stage of this project yet, and so, that is just an option as we're coordinating, this is an NC DOT road, and as we're coordinating with the town and NC DOT, you know, what makes the most sense for the future of the road. So, we just have that option on the table, whether we construct it or whether we just provide a fee in lieu, if that makes the most sense in the future.
And who would determine that?
That would be through collaboration. Like I said, this is an NC DOT road, but we're obviously in front of the town right now, so that would just be a collaboration.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the Planning Board?
I actually have one more question. Since this is a mixed use, are you allowing animals, like pets, like dogs?
I don't know that we've gotten that point yet.
Okay, yeah, I just was wondering about that.
That's a good question. I don't think we're at the rules and regulations stage of it.
Okay.
I just have one other comment. So, out parcel one and out parcel two, they look to be more drive-through friendly. I would like to encourage the developers to make those more pedestrian-friendly than car-heavy.
Thank you, sir.
Just a future consideration.
Oh, I do have one other question. I'm sorry. Have you built another mixed-use development like that in the Triangle area?
Yeah, we've, this developer has done work in Clayton. They've done a similar project.
Which, which project? I'm sorry?
Cleveland Road.
Cleveland Road, okay.
Repeat that so that it is captured for the video.
Clayton Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Board? Hearing none at this time. Thank you. Probably stick around for some, for more. We'll open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this project, you can come to the podium, give your name and address. Of this project.
Hi, I'm still in the 740 Rose Mallard Drive in Tarrant Lake. It's not exactly in favor, or, I just have a question. They said it's going to be a left turn in lane, but I want to know, could they put a light there itself, basically, to eliminate some of the traffic that might be coming and going?
Am I allowed to come up and speak?
It's already hard to come out of Tarrant Lake, so I'm just imagining what it's going to be like down the street.
We can't, we can't answer questions at this time, but we can connect you with staff to be able to get those questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Larry Lox, 508 Place, Zebulon, North Carolina, 42-year resident. Good evening, Mayor, elected officials, planning board, town staff, and citizens. Strongly in favor of this project. I have never seen one that was perfect, but this one is very, very close, and some of those reasons are, it's actually on the right road. 96 is one of our major arteries, which should be able to handle the traffic with the turn lanes. Number two, it's in the right location. It's going to serve the north side of town, which has some huge neighborhoods, and they need access to commercial as opposed to coming into town. Number three, I think it's the right size, 250 units with 25,000 square foot of commercial space, I think is a perfect balance. And I think it's going to do something else, which is very important for Zebulon. I think it's going to promote commercial development on 96 North, where we want commercial development. And anytime I come across one of these projects, I try to find a sister one, so I can go walk it, and I encourage the elected officials and the planning board to go up to Youngsville and walk through Cobblestone Village, which is on the corner of South Main Street and Young Street. It's a mixed use, very much like this, with the commercial in the front, residential in the back. And go Saturday morning, you'll see a farmer's market with 50 vendors, where private enterprise is taking over, doing the farmer's market. So, I highly encourage you to check that out. My only concern, I would like to add to the project, is we have had an uptick in crime in Zebulon the last couple years, so I would explore you to look at some security cameras, so that site's monitored 24 hours a day, especially with the commercial and the development in there. But other than that, strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Edmonds. I live at 628 Birchhead Drive, Tarrant Lake, so just right next to this development, and I just wanted to speak quickly in favor. The mixed-use residential is awesome. I think, yeah, commercial, close, that's walkable, something that my wife and I can go grab a cup of coffee or dinner, I think would be awesome. And yeah, apartments around here are few and far between, so yeah, that would be awesome as well. Thank you.
Charles, SD's 309 Lakeside Circle. I am here to just say I'm in support of this project. I think its location is perfect with the connectivity to the other neighborhoods and the commerce part, where people can interact with each other. I know if this comes to pass, I'll go there to shop. Everybody needs small places to shop. And I just think it's a good plan. I've had limited access or exposure to this plan, but from what I've seen tonight, I just think it's a great plan, and hope it gets approved. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Lucas, 111 East MacIver Street. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council members, and my fellow residents for allowing me to speak. So, I am a proud member of the downtown area, and I've been proud to live here for the past three years. I'm also a real estate agent and a developer with 70 years of personal, professional experience in the real estate industry, and I'm here to voice my support for the proposed real estate development. I personally believe this project represents a thoughtful, forward-looking investment into the future of our town, and in fact, a better-than-strict interpretation of the UDO. As someone who works in the real estate industry every day, I see the growing demand for quality housing and amenities here and across the greater Triangle area. I think this project directly addresses that need. In addition to the housing that this project brings, it also brings economic opportunities, jobs, increased foot traffic and for local businesses, and restaurants, which is really important, many more of those, and a stronger tax base to support the public services for everyone here. I think it reflects a smart, responsible growth and good for the long-term goal of improving the lifestyle of the residents of Zebulon. In closing, I'd like to encourage the council to approve this project when the final revision comes across, and yeah, I truly believe it'll help our town grow in a positive way. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, my name is Gillian Martin-Prowdy, and I live in the neighboring town of Clayton, North Carolina, 14 Cordova Street. I work with Robert Terry and George Roa as one of their preferred mortgage lenders for their real estate firm. I heard about this project and wanted to come speak in favor of it, because I personally live in the Flowers area of Clayton, which is a mixed-use development area in Clayton. And I want to speak towards what I did this weekend in my area. There was an Easter egg hunt at the local event venue space, where I got to take my children, where they could utilize that space, meet friends, meet people in the community. I also can't tell you how many times I have ran out of eggs and need to go up to the store to buy them, and don't want to go 20 minutes down the road. So, it is great to be able to hop on my golf cart or hop on a bike and ride up to the local commercial areas. Lastly, the biggest impact that I have seen it make is in my neighbor, who has a disability, who works in the commercial area, but can walk or ride a bike to now be and have some individuality to get to work and not have to rely on mom or dad or a neighbor, but maybe perhaps in the rain. So, there's so many benefits. I love where I live. I don't know if I'll ever come to Zebulon yet. You might can get me there with this, but I love the mixed-use development that I live in, so I highly encourage you trying it.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Planning Board, citizens, staff, good evening. My name is Scott Carpenter. I live in downtown Zebulon. I'm excited about this. What a great idea, a mixed-use planned development. It's something that has been talked about for a while in Zebulon, and here it is. It's coming here. We've changed things, we've made an opportunity, it looks lovely. For a rezoning request, I could see that people that are going to purchase or rent or move into these places, they're going to be excited about that. I can see that the people that live in town are going to want to go up there and visit those businesses. I can see it's, it would be a good talking point for people outside of town. We had some family and friends in town this weekend, and they asked where they could go do some shopping. They wanted to spend some money in Zebulon, and we sent them to the places. If this thing existed and was built out, we'd be sending them up there too. It's just very exciting. It looks like a very safe idea for a rezoning request. It looks very appropriate, given the build-out of the adjoining properties and its neighbors. It just seems very reasonable. I 100% share the sentiment of Commissioner Baxter. I'm excited by this project. It's exactly what we need.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Planning Board, Town Manager, Staff, and just as important, our citizens of Zebulon. My name is David Hughes. I reside at 900 East Horton Street in Zebulon. I've been a resident here since 1969. I'm a concerned citizen, as all of you are in this room, as well as online this evening, and I'm going to be brief. I felt compelled to speak about this project, because our town has never seen a project as this one in front of you before, a project that may or will set a new precedence to serve our town needs. Our citizens have been asking for more shops, more restaurants, and more upscale apartments. This proposal appears to me, upon presentation, to be a well-thought-out and designed layout, and can address those needs. Then there comes traffic and infrastructure. The transportation plan was done years ago, 15 years or more. I was part of that, to widen the rental avenue, and I'm thinking it hasn't happened due to tax base or cost. I believe we have the rooftops now, or soon to be, to justify those costs for road improvements. I believe we should move forward on both. Let me reiterate, both projects are what the town needs, not later, but now. You are being presented what the citizens have been asking for. Seize the moment. Move forward and serve our town. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the project? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Are you? State your name and address, please.
My name is Demetria Falkin.
My name is Demetria Falkin. Thank you all for giving us an opportunity, and I really appreciate all the work that everyone has done here, including the developers, you know, to bring this great project to Zebulon. I agree with them of bringing it to Zebulon, but I don't agree in the area. I live in the Barrington, and I've been here in this very place before because things have not been kept as promised in that area. I live in the Barrington, where there are going to be 1,000 homes, which is, this is 75% less than that. We were promised pools and tennis courts, and I put a lot of money in my property, and now, none of that is happening. So I feel like the town of Zebulon allowed the developers to come in and say one thing, and then down the road, it was changed to something else, you know? I don't see how this is going to benefit the residents of Zebulon other than having someplace else to eat, keeping us from having to go to Raleigh and so forth. I think Zebulon is a great place for that, but just not in a residential area. Now, I want to ask the developers and the board and the commissioners and such. Is this near the Barrington, where the Dent Bun Farm is?
Someone will get with you and answer those questions.
Because I don't want to complain about something if I'm in the wrong area. Okay, understand? I don't want to do that. But if it's that area, my entire subdivision of Barrington is not for this plan. Some of them were supposed to be here, and, you know, they said they were going to watch online because 6 o'clock, some people are still en route, you know, on a Monday. But I don't believe it's going to bring what we are looking for as residents. I could have stayed in New York or Charlotte if I wanted a mixed housing and retail business in my area. I moved here because I thought it was so deep into the Zebulon area. If they were going to do any commercial development, it would be someplace else. Right? And I think we all felt that way, right? How is it going to impact my taxes? How is it going to impact the crime? Because the crime is going, the investors tend to put people in the area that I don't even think they're doing background screenings on it. I've been here before. My first time visiting this podium was because I was concerned about my safety and the people that were moving in because they weren't respecting others, their properties, and committing crimes. It is getting a little bit better. I remember the last police chief, she worked to make sure that, you know, more police coverage in the area. How is that going to work in a large area? We already are short of law enforcement officers already. We have two officers that cover 40 miles. Now, we're going to add this, which is going to need two officers at least 24 hours a day, right? If it's there, near the farm, exit 2 or 264, that's going to be a direct shot and an easy shot for consumers and residents, you know, to move, to get there, in and out. But I'm still concerned about what it's going to do to those of us who moved to that area for a little bit of peace and serenity. That's going to change the traffic patterns. I've already spoke with you all before about the traffic patterns. And thank you for putting the mileage signs up. And hopefully, soon, we'll get some lights out there. But please consider what the residents are looking for versus what the developers are looking for versus what the tax collectors here or the real estate agents or whomever that don't live there. Ask the residents. No one has come to my door, and I'm retired. I'm home most of the time. No one has come to my door to say, "Oh, what do you think?" We just found out a couple of weeks ago because the sign with the QR was there. And that's how we found out what was going on. Ask and see what people say. Let us know what's really going on. I think this was a little bit backwards because the meeting came out of nowhere, you know, for us. And we haven't had enough to convene in the neighborhood to let everyone know what's going on, especially when our neighborhood is not even finished. It's still growing.
Okay. Thank you. And if you have any further questions, comments, please direct them to our staff. And that's anyone that has any comments that they would like to direct to our staff. Now, we will listen or hear from anyone who is not in opposition or not approving, someone that just wants to speak. Neither for nor against. Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing for this mixed-use and staff. Old Bun Road Plan Development, 2025-03.
Sorry, there should be a motion about referring it to the planning board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it somehow got messed up in the order here.
You see it in the package.
Let me see if I can find that. Just give me one second. Sorry about that. Got left off.
Yeah, Kate, it's okay to not have a motion to refer it because when we finish this next one, we'll break the meeting, and we can refer everything that was just heard to the planning board for consideration.
Perfect.
So we're good to go on Old Bun. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I will be doing a brief presentation tonight on Old Bun Road subdivision. And additionally, the applicants are here to kind of elaborate on that presentation, kind of like how you saw with the last project. So Old Bun Road Plan Development rezoning, 2025-03. So again, the standards, you'll hear them all night long. But when we're looking at any project, we're evaluating, you as the board, are evaluating the following standards: whether the project promotes the public's health, safety, and welfare; whether it's appropriate for the location in which it's proposed; whether it's reasonable and within the public's interest; and any other relevant factors that the board finds necessary. Additionally, this project, with it being a planned development, as Chris explained in the last project, this process allows developers to create a new district, allowing for greater diversity or variation of uses and densities. And so when evaluating any planned development that comes before you, you should be evaluating whether it is better than the strict interpretation of the UDO. And that's laid out in UDO Section 3.5.5. So the property, the applicant is Eastwood Homes Raleigh LLC. The property owners are Thomas and Jill Hendrickson. The property address is 1915 and 1917 Old Bun Road. The acreage, for the combined acreage for the two parcels, is 159.72 acres. The current zoning is Wake County R-30, and the proposed zoning is for a planned development or PD zoning. So public hearing notification. Public hearing signs were posted on both frontages, both on Old Bun Road and 97. Mailed notices were sent to the property owners within 750 feet. The notice was circulated in the Paper of General Circulation, which is the Wake Weekly, and it was posted there two times, both the following Fridays prior to the meeting. So last Friday and the Friday before. And as well, we posted the notice on the town's website. So current zoning, as you can see here, it's outside of our current zoning. It's actually in the Wake County zoning, which is in R-30 zoning. But you can see the adjacent zonings being residential, with the yellow indicating residential zoning. Future land use. So the future land use for this site is proposed to be suburban residential. And so what you'll see tonight is a project that is consistent with the suburban residential zoning districts as far as uses go, with a combination of different housing types in varying densities. So timeline of activity. The first review was submitted on December 2, 2024. The comment letter was sent out to the applicant on January 6, 2025. The TRC meeting was held on January 8, 2025. The second review was submitted on February 14, 2025. Comment letters were sent to the applicant on March 5, 2025. And then the joint public hearing packet submittal was completed on March 17, 2025. And so that's just the final set that you all have in your packets here today. So concept plan, this is a rather large development. And so they have a concept plan that shows phases, but I was using it to represent the overall development, so we can kind of talk about what it may look like. So single-family detached lots. There's going to be 347 proposed single-family detached lots and 270 single-family attached lots. And I'll break down what that may look like in different forms in later slides with a total of 617 units. So townhomes. So the townhomes, you can see here, are on the bottom section, closer to Old Bun Road. And then the single-family detached. So this is the southern more portion of the single-family detached, with the townhomes being right here and the single-family detached being to the north. And then this is the further north section with Long Stanton Avenue, which is a continuation of the road in Barrington, the future road in Barrington, going through this portion of the project. Some considerations. So as Chris covered in his presentation, staff likes to use this section to kind of point out a couple of things that we would like the board to note, as well as just to point out some things that we may not typically see in a rezoning or may be different. So considerations for this project. So the permitted uses are single-family detached, single-family attached, and some residential amenity uses. There was also a listed restaurant use that would be an allowed use that could maybe play into an amenity site. And if you have questions about that, I would direct those to the applicant. But I did want to note that as well, though it's not shown on the plans as being a use on the actual site as designed currently. So greenway, so to the north of the site, there's a continuation of the greenway that's going to run through Barrington when it's fully constructed. This greenway will be part of the larger town of Zebulon greenway network and will be within the riparian buffer area to the north of this site. The applicant has also proposed some paths that lead into this greenway, which I'll touch on a little bit later in the amenity slide. But I did want to point out that they will be contributing some greenway infrastructure to our greenway network. Amenities. So this portion right here, on the right hand of your screen, is the main amenity site, which include an amenity building, a pool area, a place for food trucks to hook up and sell food, a pickleball court area and a playground area, as well as some urban open space down to the south here and some parking areas to serve this amenity site. Additionally, I wanted to point out two other amenity areas. So this is the amenity area more towards the center of the site, which has the dog park and the mail kiosk. And then this is in the townhome section, which shows a second playground, as well as some dumpster enclosures that will serve the townhomes. And then some parking in both of these areas as well for both used as guest parking or for people who may be using these amenity spaces. Additionally, I wanted to point out as well that the applicant is showing that trail network kind of throughout the site, going around, so this is at the rear of the proposed amenity site, going around the existing pond and providing throughout that trail some fitness equipment that can be utilized, creating a fitness-active, open-space trail. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a number of urban open space locations, which will include items such as pocket parks, plazas, and courtyards, community gardens, pollinator gardens, and other such gathering, public gathering areas that will help to contribute towards, while not fully active, it will contribute towards those public gathering areas that we see on other residential developments. And so to kind of talk about the breakdown of the open space. The open space is kind of broken down, when we look at it in the UDO, by different use types. And so with this having two different densities, with the single-family attached and single-family detached, the applicant has provided a breakdown of what space is being provided. And so 20% of open space is being provided from the single-family attached section, and then 19% is being provided from the detached section, which exceeds the required 10% that is required by the UDO. The breakdown of how that breaks down from there on the activation is that 2.4 acres will be activated and .09 acres will be dedicated to urban open space for the single-family attached section. And then for the single-family detached section, there will be 1.98 acres dedicated to active open space and then 1.13 acres dedicated to urban open space. So the applicant will be able to answer any questions that you may have about how that breakdown works. But I did want to mention that they are going above and beyond with what they're providing as open space set aside. So perimeter buffers. The applicant is proposing perimeter buffers to the north using the existing riparian buffer, so they're not going to touch that. But that currently serves as a buffer to the stream. And so with not touching it, they'll be having an appropriate amount of buffering with the landscaping that exists there currently. And then the applicant is also going to provide a modified type-D buffer. So it's going to be a type-D buffer, but 20 feet wide rather than the regular 40 feet wide along this property that is owned by James L. and Angela P. Paul, providing a better buffer between the backs of these homes and the existing occupied residential lot to the east of the property. Additionally, I wanted to point out, because I pointed out where the buffers are, I'll point out where the buffers are not. So there's going to be no buffers provided along the side that backs up to Barrington. But with these being similar uses, that's not completely unheard of. And additionally, there is some open space that is dedicated by Barrington between the backs of these lots and the existing homes over here. So it didn't fully capture it in the image, but the backs of the homes in Barrington that run along, I don't know what road that is, but the road that runs north here, those start here. And then there's some open space that was dedicated and set aside by the HOA in Barrington that will be between the back of these lots and those lots. On the other side, so this is on the east side of the property. This is the furthest northeast side of the property, and this is the further southeast side of the property. No buffer will be provided to the existing, I believe it's just vacant or agricultural land currently. But it's a large tract of land, and so it could possibly be future residential development in the future or commercial development. Or it may remain vacant as agricultural land or vacant land. Homes fronting the road. So townhomes that are being served by a private alley will be fronting Highway 97 and Old Bun Road. This will provide a more unified look to the front of the road rather than looking at the backs of houses. And so that's being provided by the applicant. Additionally, the rest of the townhomes, well, additionally, a number of the townhomes in the development will be front-loaded and/or will have dedicated parking spaces as the parking option for the individual units. So this is something that we don't typically see. Typically, we see rear-loaded units in the town of Zebulon. But with this being a planned development, this is definitely an option for the developer to propose when proposing different housing types. And additionally, front-loading townhomes can help provide a better variety of product and a better variety... and a better variety of price points when it comes to a neighborhood and may provide some options of housing that would otherwise not be options for, due to price point. Long Stanton Avenue, so Long Stanton Avenue is running from the, running through the site from east to west, or from, sorry, from west to east, coming out of the existing Barrington neighborhood. This is shown on our Conference of Transportation Plan as a two-lane median divided road. The applicant is proposing a modified cross-section, which does not have the divided, but there will be parking along the road, which helps with certain traffic calming measures in this scenario as it's fitting more the character of a residential development rather than a commercial. Road improvements, so the big traffic that we all like to learn about and hear what's being proposed with all this new growth and new development. You will see on this plan that the applicant is showing the full widening to the four-lane median divided road that's proposed for Old Bun Road. Additionally, because similar to what you saw with the Zebulon mixed-use project, the road is not continuing on at this point in time. You see these dedicated right turn lanes into the site, which will help with people entering into the development, having the, the time and the ability to slow down to turn into their site without impeding on existing traffic on Old Bun Road. Additionally, I want to point out that the applicant is proposing a new traffic signal at the intersection of 97 and Old Bun Road, which will hopefully help with an increased amount of development, will help to, to manage traffic patterns on this site. Additionally, they're proposing the full width to have a dedicated right turn lane in the future off of 97 and that will be evaluated whether that needs to, to be fully striped for that purpose as we understand the traffic and its ever-changing effect on 97 and Old Bun Road. So utility allocation policy with any proposed plan development or any proposed rezoning, we're looking at, or conditional rezoning, we're looking at the utility allocation policy for water allocation. And in order to get water allocated, the applicant must make up 60 points. And so with this being a major subdivision, they start with 10 base points and have provided a number of other alternative bonus points to make up the rest of the 50 points to get to the 60 points. So they've provided on street parking, as you could see along, along Stanton Drive. They have committed to constructing a fountain or other stormwater amenity within the BMP or SEM. The applicant has proposed planting a pollinator garden, installing native tree species throughout the development. And those trees will be in addition to any required landscaping already required on site by the UDO and/or the plan development narrative. The private greenway, the applicant is proposing to construct 3,000 linear feet of private greenway, which will meet the Town of Zebulon standards. So this will help the neighbors living in the development connect to the greater Greenway network directly from their front doors. Additionally, the applicant has proposed a lap pool, having four lanes or minimum as an amenity, providing a deck slash patio with more than 2,000 square feet at the amenity site. The applicant is proposing the, to have a clubhouse with a meeting space with a kitchen that is less than 15,000 square feet, but, without a kitchen, less than 15,000 square feet. And then as well, outdoor kitchens or grills. Additionally, other active recreation is going to be provided on site, including a IPEMA certified playground equipment. And I believe they're actually going to have two of those. And additionally, pocket parks throughout the development, but at least one, getting them three additional points and then a pickleball court, which would be the additional five points to make up the total of 60 points. So again, to go over the standards that you'll be evaluating this project on, whether this project promotes the public's health, safety and welfare, whether it's appropriate for the location that it is proposed, whether it's reasonable and within the public's interest, other relevant factors that the board finds necessary. And then as well with this being a planned development process, it's a dialogue and we're in evaluating this project, looking that it is better than the strict interpretation of the UDO standards. So staff recommends accepting public comment after the applicant's presentation and referring the matter to the planning board for recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor York, Commissioners, Planning Board members and citizens. Thank you all for being here and for giving us this time to share our project with you tonight. I'm Molly Stewart from Morningstar Law Group, 434 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I wanted to introduce the team that we have with us here tonight and then proceed with the presentation. So we have several people here on our team who can answer any question that you have. In addition to myself, I have Willie Gillett here from Eastwood Homes Raleigh, there in the back, Dan Papst from Papst Design Group, his colleague Joshua Lieb, also from Papst Design Group, as well as Matt Peach from StanTech, our traffic engineer. So hopefully one of us can address any question that you have. I want to thank Ms. Farrell for her very detailed presentation of the what of this development, what is proposed, so that we can step back a bit in our presentation and focus more on the why and the how. So we'll keep it more big picture. I'll just let you know the kind of the big topics that I plan to, to touch on tonight. We can, of course, dive in more deeply on any of those features that you heard about earlier. So I'm going to talk about the location in particular. Why here? Why this project in this location? What are the amenities and the design features that make this proposal a true new neighborhood of Zebulon, a new extension of the town? Not intended to be a place apart or leapfrog sprawl, but an efficient and incremental expansion of the town that exists today. And finally, how the town's own policies are in part implemented by a proposal like this one before you tonight. So to get started, we'll talk about the location. This is a simple Google map. You can see the red marker on the site and the boundaries of the site are surprisingly visible for an aerial. But what's important about this image is it shows us the surrounding development types. You can see that we are next to that Barrington subdivision, which is approved to have approximately 220 more units than are proposed here on this site. You can see on the other side of that highway interchange, an additional expansion of residential development and that, and then down to the southwest, the downtown, which is five minutes away by car. So depending on where these residents are going, they can either avoid adding unnecessary traffic through the town and get right on that highway or easily bring their business to downtown as well. So both are options in this location. Here, what you see are the corporate limits of the town today. Those parcels in red, those are within the town limits. And of course, we are just outside adjacent to the town limits today. Really just highlighting again the incremental nature of this proposal. Again, not leapfrogging, not jumping out into, to more of a rural area, but sticking with the, the expansion of the existing town today. This one's a little harder to see, but what I want to point out here are those green lines. Those are the sewers and that is what allows this type of housing to exist. You see to the, to the west of this site, lots and lots of sewers. That's where the residential expansion is happening and to the east, there are none. Again, another reason to avoid that, that leapfrog development to efficiently use that infrastructure. The, the town's development map showing again, this is, this interchange area is a hotspot for development. And you can see a, a, a big chunk of development all happening together here. And there's some, some real benefits to that. You, you heard earlier about some, some traffic concerns, some, some roadway issues. Where new infrastructure is needed, where improvements are needed, this is how that happens when, when everyone can come together and builders can pay for that. We see that with or without this project, there's, there would be a need here. All of those projects, nearly all of those projects are either under construction or completed or at least approved. So, so all of that is happening and obviously that will impact the roadways with or without this project. But as you heard, this project will help to provide the infrastructure needed to support this new heart of town. So move next to the amenities and features. Obviously, I have had to turn the site so that north is on the right side of your screen. That's Old Bun Road on the left side of your screen and the Barrington subdivision there at the top. So it fits just a little bit better on the screen this way. So I wanted to talk about some different types of features. So the environmental amenities, the more active amenities for residents, as well as the historic preservation. As you heard, open space proposed will exceed the 10% standard. 19.5% open space is proposed here. What you see on your screen highlighted in, in green, those are only the official open space areas that count toward that 19.5% calculation. There will be far more on the ground that for one reason or another isn't included in these calculations. So those, that, this is sort of a minimal visual on that. Another feature I'd like to point out on this screen are, is the connectedness of this subdivision. Something that we read in the comprehensive plan was that some earlier development in the town did have sort of that disconnected feel, lots of cul-de-sacs and lack of connectedness causing traffic problems. So what we see here within the project, everything is very connected. It's sort of a skewed grid system so that it's easy to, there are lots of different ways to get where you're going. You also see many connections out to the edges of the site. Lots of step streets out to where future development will happen so that those projects can connect without sending all the traffic back to the main road. I will point out where you do see cul-de-sacs, there are only two reasons for those. On the west side at the top of your screen, that's up against the Barrington subdivision, already built in that area, so no opportunity to connect streets there. So those ended in cul-de-sacs and then of course, up by Beaver Dam Creek. No, no intent to cross that creek. So again, cul-de-sacs in that area, but in general, wherever they can be avoided within this project, they are. Another urban feature here is that main, what it will be an east-west connection through the site, as you heard Ms. Farrell talk about, that will have an urban feel to it with the on-street parking and the bike lanes. So a multimodal connection through the site, providing a safer alternative than, than going back out to the main road. The open space and, and park-like amenities on the site, you, you've heard about many of them and I don't want to repeat too much, but you did hear about the pollinator gardens, dog parks, pocket parks, greenway trails, as well as a community garden. There are also active amenities proposed. The food truck hookups, you, you did hear that that was listed. I think if, if anyone has experienced sort of the, the food truck events where there are just generators everywhere, these hookups can avoid that. So making a much more pleasant experience. Also providing an outdoor dining area nearby so that those things can work together or separately. One can bring a picnic. That's actually the reason for that restaurant use because this may fall into that category once you have the trucks out there. So it's not necessarily accessory to something. Anyone could theoretically show up and use those food trucks. So that's what that is about. Obviously, you saw the clubhouse, the pool, the playground and also a fishing dock will be provided. Finally, historic preservation are the last amenity that I'll talk about tonight. This is the Bennett Bun Lodge, also the cemetery is being preserved as part of that binding master plan submitted with the rezoning request. The most important feature of this site that I'd like to talk about is the very wide range of housing provided. So while all of it is for sale housing, within that category, there's a very wide range proposed. What you see on your screen here, these are all the attached single-family types, sort of precedent photos of other Eastwood Home developments. And so here you see different heights and as well as different access. Some of these would be, would have alleys behind, some would have the driveways in the front. That's a less expensive model. Some would have no, no garages and so even less expensive. So a wide range of price points within that. As well as the single-family detached units, again, very wide range with square footages of those units extending from approximately 1,500 square feet all the way up to about 4,000, so lots of options, as well as accessibility features. So there will be a senior friendly section of the, of the project that will have more accessible units, really more accessible for anyone, but, but certainly with that population in mind as well. I wanted to touch on briefly the, some of the key policies in the Zebulon Conference of Plan that are supported by this project. Here's where you see that comment on earlier street patterns that were not connected, leapfrog development, creating sprawl and creating traffic. Here, just highlighting for you those street connections to those adjacent properties. Some additional goals that, that come up in there, support a variety of housing types, designs and densities. Certainly a, a major goal of this project, as well as encouraging pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. So you heard about all the greenways being provided throughout the site, as well as that sort of east-west cross-street providing biking pedestrian facilities there as well. There are a couple of other major town policies being fulfilled by this proposal. They don't necessarily lend themselves to pretty images, however. One of the, the goals in there is to retire some smaller and older pump stations and to, and to replace that. This project does propose to provide a, a new, larger pump station to allow one of the smaller ones to be retired, as well as widening those adjacent existing roads. As you saw from the development map, that is a project that would likely need to happen anyway. And with this proposal, it's something that can be accomplished through private development. Obviously, we could keep talking forever about the, the details of this project. It's, it's quite large, a lot of moving parts. We are all here to have that discussion. So very much looking forward to hearing your questions. Particularly, we, we can dive in further on transportation, on historic preservation, on those buffers, whatever topic you find of interest. We are all here to continue that conversation and we look forward to that. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the board, Commissioner Vaxler?
So I have real concern, especially after speaking with Eastwood. This is a little bit different than what I was anticipating was going to be presented. I'm worried about the lack of buffers on Old Bun Road and on 97. I certainly would like to see a little bit more of a screening effort so that the residents that purchase homes along Old Bun Road and 97 have a feeling of privacy and a little bit more community. And that goes without having to look at a busy road outside of their windows. In addition, I would like to make the same request of this development as I did the last one. And that is to use pollinator-friendly plantings whenever possible. I also have a concern about the front-loaded townhomes and of the setbacks in general. I would like to make sure that the setbacks are large enough to accommodate a full-size vehicle so that anyone that might need to utilize their garage space as extended living space can still park their vehicle on their property. I would also like some sort of buffer effort along the side that adjoins the current agricultural land. Because as we know, at some point that is going to develop into something. And just to proactively manage what will become an expectation of those homeowners, and that is a sense of privacy, so that when that land does get developed, they still have a feeling of being sheltered and screened from the adjoining property. And then And then, I think finally for me, I have not heard any conversation around affordable or workforce housing, and in my conversations throughout, I made that known, that that is something that we prioritize here in Zebulon now. It's very important for us to make sure that there is a good faith effort to help us achieving, achieve our workforce and affordable housing goals. And so, I would like to hear a little bit more from Eastwood as to what they're going to do. A 5% offering would be approximately 31 homes. And so, I would like to speak on what their thoughts are as far as affordable/workforce housing.
Thank you for those comments. With your leave, I'm happy to give some responses to those now.
Yeah, I saw you scribbling furiously, and so if I need to repeat anything, I certainly will.
No, I appreciate those comments, and I will be inviting some of our team up to assist as well. A couple of these, I know that we, there is some history that we'll need them to address regarding particularly those homes along Old Bun and 97. I believe that was specifically a request from staff to make it more urban, to have that frontage, so we'll let them address that. The other, the other one that I can add to is regarding that affordability. So, when you have private, unsubsidized, for-sale development, I'm not aware of a local example of where that has sort of dedicated, restricted affordability. And there are some good reasons for that, because, for example, depending on how long it's affordable for, does it restrict the new homeowner from making a profit on it? Do they not build their wealth through it? How does that work? Someone at some point down the line gets a windfall if those expire. It gets very complicated, and in particular with HOA dues, do they pay their full share? Do others subsidize them? How does that work? So, it becomes very difficult, but we can also address that. What I can tell you is that the goal here, the design of this, does have some of those different housing types designed to allow for more natural affordability. And what we can say, it's a world of quickly changing construction costs, but what we can say is if they were for sale today, the understanding is that these would start in the upper 200s, and so certainly it's a, that's a market that is being targeted here, that we know. And with that, I will invite up, Dan, do you want to go next? Okay. So, and I'll remind you what some of the questions were. Do you want to address?
In addition, so since you were like the note-taker, I also want to speak a little bit about the intersection of Old Bun and 97, because that is an extremely dangerous intersection, and by looking at the TIA and the proposed changes, I just want to like have a little bit more of a conversation about that.
Great. So, screening on the street?
Good evening, commissioners, members of the zoning board. My name is Dan Paps, Paps Design Group, 107 Fayetteville Street here in Raleigh, North Carolina. It's a pleasure to be before you today. So, we're obviously very excited about this particular project, and been active in working on this for probably well over a year, year and a half now, it seems, but time does fly by. To the specific point on Old Bun Road, I think what, when we were working with staff in our earliest conversations and continuing to move forward, we're trying to push a certain urban form, and part of that also, as well as some of the rear-loaded options, the alley-fed options with the townhome products, and the thought with the urban form is to put the townhomes where they are facing the street, so you're not seeing typically a garage. So, they're more forward in kind of defining that street scape versus a buffer yard that you had referred to. So, that was really the design intent there, and how we've kind of moved forward with the design. Moving around the property, and if you excuse me, I believe we were talking about the eastern. One next? Buffer?
The buffers?
Yes.
Sure, yes.
Okay. So, the agricultural land, it's a fairly large tract of land. I think it's close to, at least GIS indicates, about 300 acres, and it's currently owned by an LLC, and it's been held by the same LLC for quite a while. I believe they've timbered the property at some point and had the agricultural, US Agriculture, Department of Agriculture reforest it, plant it, and it, you can kind of see that, it's a little grayed out, but that's kind of what's going on there. The reason we did not propose the buffer along that eastern property line, north of the towns, north of the Pauls' property, is it's anticipated that most likely, this would come through as a planned development in the future, and what you would see is a use for a use. So, most likely, single-family against single-family. When you have those types of situations, you're typically not providing a buffer to screen a single-family home from a single-family home. So, that's the reason behind that on the eastern side. We are proposing a more strict buffer along the Pauls' property, and we've met with them several times, and they've been great to work with. We are proposing a 20-foot-wide type D buffer, and it is extremely opaque, 75% evergreen, understory, 100% evergreen shrubs, as well as your deciduous that would make up for the difference similar to that. So, we want to make sure that we know they're going to be there. They are a partner, they are a neighbor. We're wanting to work with them and, you know, provide them with something that makes them feel extremely comfortable. Working, I'm sorry, but I don't know, did you mention the western buffer at all, or just the northern-eastern? Okay. I think that addresses the buffer.
Yeah.
Okay. So, driveway stems. So, the ordinance currently, I think, requires 25-foot driveway stems. What we're proposing is a five-foot reduction to 20 feet, and typically, what we see and how we've planned for that is it's 20-foot setback from the right-of-way lines, which will allow for a vehicle, not an RV, for instance, but your standard vehicle, van, SUV typically to fit there. You know, typically, a parking space just as a reference can be nine by 18 to 10 by 20. Here, we're providing that 20-foot depth. There also is what we call a verge behind the public sidewalk in between the right-of-way that gives an additional increase in distance horizontally, because we want to make sure that cars are off the sidewalk. I've seen the older neighborhoods around that have had townhome communities that have been approved, and that is a problem. However, we do feel comfortable with the 20 feet, that's why we did proffer that particular condition. Level, pollinator-friendly. I'm not a plant guy, but my colleague, Josh Leav, in our office is a designer, landscape architecture. I can assure you, I think we've committed to that. If there needs to be more, I guess, stronger language, we can definitely, we're willing to do that, because I think the pollinator gardens are great, the community gardens, you're going to see a lot of them. It's a very active community, or it's intended to be.
Next turn to Matt Peach from Stantec to address, address the intersection of Old Bun Road and 97.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Matt Peach with Stantec Consulting Services, 801 Jones Franklin Road in Raleigh. Very happy to be here tonight, and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing up your concerns over the intersection of NC 97 and Old Bun Road. I think you hit the nail on the head. There's a couple of factors that play to some of your concerns. First and foremost are speeds on NC 97. That road is posted 55 miles an hour, so vehicles are definitely traveling very fast along that road. In addition, the skew of the intersection also plays a factor in the safety concerns, and the fact that it's a two-way stop-controlled intersection with skew issues make the sightlines very difficult. So, you combine difficult sightlines with high speeds, and it's not a great combination for safety at all. The reason I bring that up, and thank you for expressing your concerns, is that this development is recommending not only widening the intersection for capacity issues, but also installing a traffic signal as part of this project, which will give clear indications for all approaches when it is safe to kind of make their turns, go straight through the intersection. So, thank you for bringing that up. It's a very valid concern.
The, just because of the extreme angle when you are making a left off of 97 onto Old Bun Road, my concern is that, along with the sightlines, along with the traffic, we are going to have to have some conversations with NC DOT as far as speeds go through that, through that intersection. Can you speak to exactly how wide it's go?
What Dan was just mentioning to me is that there's also a request that's being made to NC DOT to reduce the speed limit to 45 miles per hour. But in addition to that, the widening that you saw, and town staff actually had a great slide where you saw all the extensive widening along Old Bun Road as long as, as well as NC 97, the widening there will help open things up and make sure that we can have the vehicles make the turns appropriately and not get into other folks' lane. That traffic signal will be designed, obviously, at a later stage than we are right now, so we're not there yet, but that's the time where we'll check and we'll make sure that the, the stop lines are placed appropriately such that cars are not turning across one another.
Okay, and then, it seems from the diagram that there is going to be a dedication for the right-turn lane off of Old Bun to 97? Is that correct?
Do you mind bringing up the plan? I'm sorry, would you bring up the overall site plan that shows the conditions? Just want to make sure I'm clear on the question.
One that was on my slides?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
Okay. I believe the question was referring the right-turn lane from Old Bun Road onto NC 97, is that correct? And the dedication of right-of-way line?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And so, those extra triangles will, I'm assuming, still be paved? You're just widening the actual turn portion?
That's correct. And that's really what you're seeing is a monolithic island, concrete island, that creates that channelized lane for that right movement. And it will have a edge line essentially around the island. Does that make sense?
Is it going to be a soft curb? Is that what you're talking about?
It will be a soft curb, yes, ma'am. A very large radius.
Okay, but still, not large enough so that it will damage our emergency vehicles when they have to make that left?
Yes, ma'am. Correct. We will, we'll also have turning templates for fire apparatus, EMS, and to making sure that they safely travel through that. There's going to be signal design, it's going to be reviewed by NC DOT. All of those things will be reviewed by the Department of Transportation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You had mentioned something about a lift station, or repairing a lift station, or a new lift station?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question was coming.
Yeah.
So, there is, there's existing, we've been working with Raleigh Water, and we have for close to two years now, roughly, and what will happen is the existing regional lift station that's to the west of the Barrington subdivision will be decommissioned, and we will be constructing a new regional lift station on our northeast corner of the property that will serve a much larger sewer shed and introduce additional capacity into the system.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Just one quick one. Is there a reason, Kate, that we deviated from the 750 feet for neighborhood notification on this one?
I believe the applicant provided 800 feet. They just provided more letters, and so we just sent them out, and that might have been to capture Barrington, it might have been just to make sure that they're covering their bases.
It seems so long, long ago, but I know we sent out about 300 notices, I believe, total, roughly.
Thank you. And then, one question. Did we have any neighbors, any neighbors come to your meeting?
We did. We had about, it was actually after Thanksgiving, we had about 10 neighbors that showed up, and the Pauls', the Paul family, who's the tract that's up front, we've met with them several times since.
Well, I didn't see the signing list of that. Does it exist? Was it in the packets?
Where it is.
I maybe I missed it. Okay, on the backside.
Neighborhood meeting section of your packet.
Page 176.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board or commissioners? Hearing none? Any questions, comments from the planning board?
So, Mayor York mentioned the lift station. I just had a further question on that. So, is the capacity just for your development plus what is currently being done, or how is that going to impact future development in that vicinity? Because we all know that it's going to grow, so.
I mean, that's, it's a great question. So, it's a benefit to the community. It's not just for our subdivision, it's for our subdivision, the existing subdivisions that are to the west upstream of the lift station, as well as future development within that greater sewer shed that has the ability to drain to it. So, not to get into too much detail or conversation on that, but essentially, what will happen is with the decommissioning of the existing lift station, the construction of the new lift station, regional lift station, as properties develop further east, that lift station, I call it a lift station on wheels, it essentially is going to move further east, and it's going to get larger as it goes to serve a much larger sewer shed, which eventually gets to the infrastructure policy of the comprehensive plan in terms of trying to sewer this area, because we do know that that is a challenge currently, that there's a lot of opportunity to develop and grow this area town, but lack of infrastructure, so that's going to be provided with this development.
Does, so you're saying, you know, to the west, does that help with any of that, to the south as well, on the other side of like Old Bun or any of that? Or is that below that sewer shed?
It's as it would flow or gravity.
Right, well, no, I understand that. I mean, you know, topography plays a role in all of that.
Right.
It has to roll downhill. I'm a plumbing engineer, so I get this. So, but my question is, you're putting it on the northernmost part of your lot, you know, is this at the lowest point of your lot? So, we're going to capture the most flow down to it? Or are we talking, it's kind of like middle of the road, or is it at the high spot? And the future capacity is getting smaller and smaller, depending on where we put it?
So, is in the absolute lowest elevation that it can be built? So, the Beaver Dam Creek watershed in general is very large, very, very large. So, it's capturing a significant drainage sewer shed to it, essentially. It is in the best location to do that.
Anyone else from the planning board? Comments, questions?
So, mostly just a comment. I too share Commissioner Baxter's concerns about the townhomes fronting onto Old Bun Road. It just, as you drive down Old Bun towards 97, it's very rural now, and even Barrington, which you come to before you would come to this project, on the road frontage itself, you don't see a whole. this project, on the road frontage itself, you don't see a whole just wall of homes. It still seemingly has a buffer area there. So, I would just encourage any exploration we can do of maybe a little bit more buffer on the houses fronting on Old Bun Road there. Because we have just a whole lot of townhomes packed right in there. And then my other question was just going to be, what specifically was going to be done with the historic structure? I know it's going to be preserved.
So, as part of the master plan, it is to be preserved. It's, future at this point isn't necessarily known. It would be available for someone to use in a new way, but it is part of this binding plan.
So, it's just going to be sitting in the middle of the subdivision?
It is. It is. So, the home site would be preserved. And we've had conversations with Preservation NC, how that would work. Because to be honest, there are details we need to work out because my client hasn't really, it's not something you typically see. So, we want to make sure that everything is taken care of correctly. But 100% the intentions to preserve that either in a deed, an easement, or just outright somebody that's committing to the preservation.
Anyone else from the planning board? Questions, comments?
With that building back to pick up what Mr. Schiller's talking about, we do have a great organization here called Preservation Zebulon. Somehow, if we could correspond with those guys, kind of see what if they could. I know they exist and doing a great job in Zebulon, so we could do that.
Beth, can you raise your hand?
Yeah, right behind you, actually. So, just wanted to let that man know. Shameless plug, but we're good.
Any other questions, comments from board of commissioners or planning board?
Anyone wishes to speak in favor?
This project come to the podium? Name, address?
And planning board. I'm not opposing, but I got a concern.
Could you please state your name and address, please?
Robert Holden. Robert Holden.
Address?
221 Old Bun Road. Sorry about that. Just have a concern about whether interest going to this property is going to be, and I think the proposed interest is going to be right in front of my driveway coming off of 97. And I don't understand, I need a little more clarification on maybe another location coming off of Old Bun Road instead of 97. Because you got people, that road is busy. Someone mentioned it a moment ago that there's accidents. It's normally two accidents a week almost on that road at that spot. And you got people coming on 97 from about four counties, Nash, Franklin, Johnson, and I don't remember what it is. But it's busy. It's busy. And I just have a concern about getting out, you know, when I need to get out.
Someone from the planning department will talk to you about the actual site plan, if that would be helpful?
Yes, yes. It would.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the project? Anyone wishes to speak in opposition to the project?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Planning Board, and the public. I'm Mary Beth Carpenter. I live at 214 East Horton Street. I'm Executive Director of Preservation Zebulon. The rezoning to accommodate Eastwood Homes of Raleigh to build a 617-unit subdivision at the side of the Bennett Bun property. I see there is a small area parceled out for the circa 1833 home and the circa 1790 cabin and markings for the two cemeteries to stay in place. But otherwise, it looks like a very high-density subdivision right through that historic place. This property is listed as a Wake County landmark and it's a standalone listing on the National Register of Historic Places. This is a designation that is very hard to get and there are only four in Zebulon. The criteria assessment for it to be on the National Register were four-part. It's associated with the development and farming economy of rural Wake County from the late 18th century through the present. The remarkable number of mid-19th century, early to 20th, 20th century outbuildings are a history of agricultural practices in the region. B, it's associated with the Bun family, a substantial and prosperous farming family who've been in the area for over 200 years. C, it's a representative and intact example of a prosperous farmstead made up of the main house and its attendant outbuildings. The family has in its possession various deeds, maps, and records which flesh out the history of the farm and which I now have, and I'm writing a chapter on in my book on Zebulon. I've given a presentation on this to the Little River Historical Society and I'm happy to do it again to interested parties. It's extremely likable to yield information about agricultural practices from the late 18th century to the present. This property was settled and farmed by Benjamin Bun Jr., whose father, Benjamin Bun Sr., fought in the Revolutionary War as a captain at Wilmington. Benjamin Jr. was the eldest son. The other sons, Burwell, the second oldest, are also prominent in the area. Burwell built what is known today as Stonewall Manor and Rocky Mount, and that is preserved by its own group. And the fourth son, William, was the father of Green Bun, for whom the town of Bun is named, and the father of Wiley Bun, who built a home and graveyard on Duke's Lake Road, which is today owned by Tommy Massey, who had to leave. Benjamin Bun Jr. had eight children and Bennett Bun was the fourth son. He inherited from his father's estate, quote, "land between Beaver Dam branch and the road." So, this was a huge section. The log cabin dating to 1790 is reported to have served as his first residence, and he lived there 40 years until constructing the larger house in 1833. The lodge you referred to is a lodge that Tom Hendrickson built about 25 years ago, further back on the property, and I see it slated to be torn down. And it's only 25 years old, so that's fine. The cabin was then used as a kitchen until 1898. Benjamin Bun cultivated 300 acres of corn and wheat and had cattle, sheep, and swine. When he died in 1856, his widow received the house and the tract of 867 acres. Three of his four sons died in the Civil War and some are buried in the home's grave plot. There are also reportedly five graves in the slave graveyard, which is 800 feet from the house. I understand there's a dog park scheduled to be built right by the family graveyard and another amenity by the slave graveyard. I'm happy that the graveyards are being saved. The second part of the Bun estate, which was given to eldest son, Cade Bun, with its mill and a large home, has been torn down after the dam broke in 1848 in a storm, and it's now Bun Lake with the development all around it. So, marked on the site plan for the development of this Bennett Bun parcel are a separate section for the 1790 cabin, a north barn, which was a smokehouse built in the 1790s, and an outer barn from 1911 built around it. And there's a dairy built in 1833 at the same time with the great house. This is a mortise and tendon structure. You hardly ever see this architecture anymore. It was held with wooden pegs. Originally, there was a dirt floor and a well where they kept butter and milk. All of these buildings, which range from 240 to 190 years old, are planned to be smacked, placed right up against high-density dwellings, townhouses with almost no buffer. This is a sad way to honor and remember our past. The pond behind the cabin, which contributed to the agricultural feel of the parcel, is marked to be drained and built upon. And on that site plan that we just saw, there are high-density townhouses right behind the cabin where the pond is now. When Tom Hendrickson came to this board asking for some consideration with the subdivision that is now there, he asked for a very large buffer to be built so that the integrity of his whole parcel of land, which was 30 acres, could be preserved. And they did put a buffer there. And I don't see any such buffer around the historic portion of this now. I do see some wonderful parks and Greenway area, but I just don't see it around the historic portion. The Wake County Historic Preservation Commission had not been told of these plans, even though I heard you say you went to Preservation North Carolina. But the governing body for this, of which this group belongs to, is the Wake County Historic Preservation Commission. And they had heard nothing of it as of this morning. The Bennett Bun property holds a Wake County landmark. I ask the town staff to please keep them apprised of this project and seek their input as well. When this comes to the planning board, please seek the input of the Historic Commission, Wake County Historic Preservation Commission, because they didn't have any idea of this and they do have some opinions. Perhaps the town could consider purchasing the historic parcel of this property and consider it for a park to educate its citizens on its historic roots. Otherwise, if that isn't in the consideration or in the works, I ask that if zoning and project goes forward, that our planning board, staff, and commissioners respect the historic nature of this property. It's not just a retired house that needs to be retired so something else can be built. These were leaders of our town. These were people who settled this area. And the roots go deep. I ask that you respect the historic nature of this property and make moves to increase the buffers around the historic area so it can retain some of its integrity. And I ask that those townhomes all along Old Bun Road perhaps be moved with the detached homes in the back, because at least that would give it a buffer and some space to breathe and not hurt the rural feel of the area as much. After all, this is one of the last properties of its kind and the only 1790 area property in Zebulon ZTJ. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak in opposition of the development?
I live at 505 Henham Way in the Barrington subdivision. I am opposed to it. I didn't know about this meeting until today, so I don't have a history lesson like this lady here. But I do appreciate the Old Bun Road plantation. I do not feel like a new subdivision will work out. It's just not plausible. It's, Old Bun Road by itself is just too, it's congested now. So, adding another subdivision, even if you widen the roads, you can't widen Old Bun Road too much without cutting into that plantation. That's the only way that I can see that happening. Because if you try to cut into the other side, you're going to be cutting into other people's homes. So, you can only do it so much. And then once you come down to Barrington, there's already been paved sidewalk there. So, it's gonna, if you widen it to let people in, it's gonna just dale back down. We still have homes that are being built in Barrington. You go across the bridge, there are homes that are about to be built. I don't feel like a whole new subdivision for Eastwood, it wouldn't work. It just, I don't feel like it would work. I do like what this lady said in regards to maintaining that plantation. If there is any, if it can't be maintained, at least something like a park or something that our subdivision, the subdivision that's being built, the subdivision behind that, then all the homes on the left side as well can enjoy. So, that's it.
I think we had, was there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition of the development? We had three email letters in opposition and we have staff read those letters at this time.
So, I received these letters via email, which is a typical thing and is posted in our letters of notice. Typically, the clerk reads them in as basically into the record. But because we don't have a clerk at this meeting, I will be reading them into the record. So, this first email is from Chloe Sherman. Hello, I'm writing in regards to the proposition to tear down the Bun Farms on Old Bun Road and turn it into apartment/retail space. I'm against the proposal. One reason we purchased our home in Barrington Community next to the farm is because of the country atmosphere. The drive past the farm is beautiful and peaceful and doesn't need to be torn down. I believe there's plenty of other space closer to downtown for development. We would like our neighborhood peaceful and not bring in the noise and traffic that inevitably comes with retail and apartments. Please keep this town peaceful and don't crowd it with unnecessary development. Record number two was from Kate Hitman. I want to email and have my opinion on record that I do not want this to pass. Most of the Barrington subdivisions are against this new possible development and many of us will be moving and selling our properties if this does indeed go through. The current roads, Old Bun, are absolutely not equipped to handle this kind of traffic, plus all the extra trash everywhere, the noise, and major safety risks because of how bad the road is currently. It's too small and full of potholes and there is no way that tiny broken road can handle 300-plus more residents. There will be major accidents and constant police activity indeed. Please understand me when I say none of us want this. The town needs better infrastructure before adding more residential areas. This is a genuine safety concern for all of the residents in Barrington, including children. I only bought my property two years ago and because this may have, I may have to sell at a loss because this is completely unacceptable. Please reconsider as none of the current residents want this, nor will they stay here and accept it. Thank you for your consideration. And then item number three is from Beth Fisher. Good morning. I live on East Skin and Avenue, very near where it intersects with Old Bun Road. The intersection is already a safety hazard with frequent accidents. Adding 600-plus homes to the corner would only increase the danger. Additionally, many of the subdivisions that have been built along Old Bun Road are a large majority rental properties. In my opinion, that is not good for the town of Zebulon. We need homeowners investing in our area, not developers and investors who are more concerned about their profit than what is in Zebulon. Finally, I do not know how the rezoning and incorporation into town limits work, but I would like to go on record and say I absolutely do not want my property at 1208 East Skin and incorporate it into the town limits.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak neither for or against the development?
I'm Larry Lauks, 508th Place, Southern North Carolina, 42-year citizen. Excuse me if I feel like I'm preaching to the choir tonight, but over 30 years of economic development experience with UNC, working on hundreds of projects statewide, you have to ask yourself, do I or do you, Zebulon, need this project? That's the one thing that always has to go through your mind. And six quick points. Is there a better use of this historical land? In other words, could it be used for something other than subdivision? Number two, as Commissioner Baxter recommended, Highway 97 and Old Bun, can it handle this increased traffic intersections? And of all the years I've read traffic impact analysis studies, I've never seen accidents reports included. And I've always wondered why there's not like a five-year accident reports for these roads. Look into that. The other item is on Old Bun Road, if you approve this subdivision, you're approaching 2,000 homes. you're approaching 2,000 homes on Old Bun Road. That's a small town. You factor in the area neighborhoods, you're well over 2,500 homes. We have no fire substation in that part of town. There are no parks or recreations for the kids. And the statistic for homes right now, for every 153 homes, you have to add a police officer. So this one subdivision is four or five new police officers, okay? The other item, and we forget about this because we think it's Wake County's problem, but there's something else that leaves a subdivision every morning and returns every night? That's a student. Can we handle the increase in students from the subdivision? If just half of those homes, just half, have two kids, you're throwing 600 kids into our school system, which means you're probably going to end up busing some kids into Windell or Lizard Lick if they accommodate them. So you need to be thinking about that. And also, as I recommended, there are no parks or anything on this side of town for those kids to do. And with close to 2,000 homes, you have hundreds of kids on that side of town with no parks. And the last item, I have to correct myself, my wife reminded me, Cabo Stone Village is in Roseville, not Youngsville. So once again, I stand corrected on where Cabo, Cabo Stone Village is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak neither for or against the development? And as we said earlier, if you have any questions, get with a staff member to try to answer any questions or concerns that you may have. At this time, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter to the planning board. It's time. We refer the matter to the planning board. Yeah, yeah.